Good evening. We'd like to call the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to order, and tonight we have a guest with us, a distinguished pastor here, Alan Jackson, who will be given our invocation, and then after that Trey Gooch will lead us in the pledge. Alan is with the World Outreach Church. I'm sure that most of you know.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you bow with me? Heavenly Father, we thank you for the evening and the great freedom and honor and privilege we have of governing ourselves. For the liberty we have, I thank you for those men and women who give their time and energy to provide leadership in this community, for the many blessings you have given us. I pray that you give them wisdom and courage, integrity of heart, to make choices that will allow your very best to continue to fill our lives, and your blessings come to all of us. Thank you for it. In Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Farley.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Hall.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Coggan.
President.
Commissioner Bullen.
Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Daniel.
Here.
Twenty-one present.
Before you, a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Commissioner Farley.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the minutes as mailed.
Do you have a second from Commissioner Sandlin? Does anyone have any corrections or additions? All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We have no requests for public comments tonight. We have two resolutions of sympathy, and our first one, we'll call on Commissioner Anthony Johnson with respect to a resolution for Mr. Fred Johnson. If there's anyone here from the Johnson family that would like to join me up here, please come forward.
A resolution of sympathy for Fred Johnson, whereas it was with great sadness that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of Fred Franklin Johnson, a friend of many, and whereas Mr. Johnson was preceded in death by his wife Joyce Hughley Johnson and his daughter Meling Caldwell, and he is survived by his son and daughter-in-law, Dennis F. Janet Johnson, Sr., son-in-law Ron Caldwell, Edna Johnson Farmer, mother of his children, grandchildren Jessica Billy Howes, Chad Ashley Caldwell, Dennis F. Jennifer Johnson, Jr., Mary Kelly Richard Keel, Dusty Stephanie Johnson, Michelle Loggins, Leah Martin, and 22 grandchildren, and whereas Mr. Johnson was a member of the Old Jefferson Church of Christ, was retired from AFCO Aerostructures, and was a lifelong and devoted Smyrna Bulldog fan, and whereas Mr. Johnson was the first one-man Parks and Recreation Department for Smyrna, and was also the first Smyrna Little League coach with his brother Julian Johnson as manager, and whereas we know that his passing has caused great sadness to his family and friends, now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on this 13th day of May of 2010 does hereby extend sincere sympathy to the family of Fred Franklin Johnson, and be it therefore resolved that a copy of this resolution of sympathy be forwarded to the family of Mr. Johnson by the clerk of this legislative body. I so move, Mr. Chairman.
All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson, and thank you for sharing with us, your dad and over these many years, and father-in-law. He loved his family, loved his community, and loved his teams, did he not?
Yes, sir.
So, we appreciate you coming and sharing with us.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we will call on Commissioner Bullen, and he will be reading a resolution of sympathy regarding Dr. Bob Wommack.
Many have written about and commented on the passing of Dr. Bob Wommack. Anyone who was associated with the walking horse industry or associated with the university in the last 50 years realized the impact that he made on the university, with the university and the walking horse community, but more importantly, he impacted quite a few lives, including my own. Dr. Wommack was a magnificent example of what Tom Brokaw called the greatest generation, although I often thought that those who won the American Revolution and managed to establish the United States Constitution, if they were here today, they would say that they did all right themselves. But Dr. Wommack was, I guess, best remembered and noted by those who knew him well as a person who just demanded that you learn to think for yourself, and that you learn not just to take the views of other people, but to learn to figure out how to arrive at what you believe, and to question sometimes what might be standard or conventional wisdom. So, people may ask, why do we read these resolutions of sympathy? A piece of paper like this can't do justice to someone. I think the reason that we do this, that, one, we want to remind the community that we've lost a valuable citizen, and, secondly, I think we like to, as a commission, say to the family that we appreciate a life that was well-lived, and that we want to give official notice of that. So, with that in mind, I read this resolution. Whereas it was with great sadness that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of Dr. Bob Wommack, a friend of many, and whereas Dr. Wommack was preceded in death by his wife Elizabeth Clements Wommack, and he is survived by two sons, Andy Cherry Wommack and Ricky Wommack, two daughters Laura Steve Daniel and Lynn Wommack, grandsons David Cheryl Wommack, Jackson and Samuel Short, granddaughters Dana Wommack, Marguerite, Rob Simmons, Sarah Wommack and Megan Daniel, and great-grandchildren Molly and Mason Wommack and Riley and Emery Sims, and whereas Dr. Wommack was a naval officer in the Pacific in World War II, was a professor in the Department of Educational Leadership at Middle Tennessee State University, recently renamed the Wommack Family Department of Educational Leadership, and was a nationally-recognized author, scholar, and teacher, and whereas he has been inducted into both the Tennessee Teachers Hall of Fame and the Tennessee Walking Horse National Celebration Hall of Fame, whereas we know that his passing has caused great sadness to his family and friends, now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on this 13th day of May 2010 does hereby extend sincere sympathy to the family of Dr. Bob Wommack, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of sympathy be forwarded to the family of Dr. Wommack by the clerk of this legislative body. I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner P. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bullen, for recognizing a very influential man in the lives of many, including me in a freshman philosophy class. Yes, he did teach me to think a little bit outside my norm. Okay, let's see. Next, we're going to call on Commissioner Jeff Jordan, and he's going to recognize a highly-successful group of young ladies. Commissioner Jordan. I think all of us as commissioners would agree that one of the things that we get to do, and not everything is fun, but when you get to recognize a state champion, that's a lot of fun. Coach Hodges is going to escort her team up, and spread out behind me if you would, and while they're coming up, I got to see these young ladies play, I believe, 13 times this year, including the last six, and it was a delight. Some of them I've watched in 7th grade, but we won't talk about Mrs. Spurlock like that. This ball club standing behind me has done truly a remarkable thing. They haven't lost a district game all year, haven't lost a game in the mid-state all year either, and haven't lost in this year. Matter of fact, we were buying Christmas presents when they last lost, which I believe was December 5th, and they're on a 27-game winning streak, and there really wasn't much left to do after the state tournament. As the first night, they beat the number-one-ranked team, although they obviously proved that to be incorrect ranking, the first night, and then beat the number-one team from the west and the number-one team from the east. There was nobody left for them to beat. It's not all in the resolution, which I'll read in a moment, but I want to tell you a little bit about some of these youngsters, and just to remind you that Coach Hodges, among many other honors, and a 57-8 record over two years, I don't know how you do that frankly, was the area Coach of the Year. There's a regular-season all-district squad, which, and I'm, let's save everything here for the end, because I'm going to leave somebody off here in just a minute. Jacissa Haislip and Ashley Henry were on the regular-season all-district team, and Taisha Petty and Jacissa Haislip were on the all-district tournament team, the all-region tournament. Olivia Jones, who's a freshman, was on that team, along with Jacissa Haislip and Taisha Petty. All-state team Taisha Petty and Jacissa Haislip were on that team. The all-area team Taisha Petty was represented there, as was Jacissa Haislip, which brings us to Jacobia Barbie. And where are you, Jacobia? Come up here just one second, and then you can go right back to your spot. You can't possibly be embarrassed. These are just a few people here. You've played in front of thousands. This young lady is a sophomore, played at Christiana, was a member of the all-county team there. She was all-area player, all-district MVP, all-district tournament MVP, all-region, they made a mistake, there is no region MVP for her to win. She was all-state MVP. In the three games, she averaged 29 points and 16 rebounds in three games. Tremendous. You can go back over and stand. Resolution of recognition, 2009-10 Riverdale Lady Warrior basketball team, and I'm blessed. I got to do this twice in four years. Whereas, for the second time in the last four years, the Riverdale Lady Warriors basketball team has won the state title when they became champions of the 2010 Class AAA T-Lovest AA Girls Basketball State Tournament in March, and whereas the Riverdale Lady Warriors basketball team won the championship when they defeated Mount Juliet, boy, I just love to say that, defeated Mount Juliet 64-63 in double overtime in Round 1, Memphis Overton 66-40 in Round 2, and Morristown West 59-42 in the championship game, and whereas this has been an exciting, hard-fought, and successful 30-2 season, and special commendation is due to all team members and to head coach Hillary Hodges and her staff for their dedication and commitment, which made this championship possible, and for bringing this fine publicity to our community by their good sportsmanship and inspired team play. And whereas the team members are Jacissa Haislip, Aubrey Jernigan, Natalie Lanning, Rachel Orman, Taisha Petty, Kiana Dalton, Nicole Petrowski, Candace Spurlock, Jessica Azor, Haley Boland, Katie Bryan, Lauren Cantrell, Ashley Henry, Hannah Scott, Olivia Jones, Jacobia Barbie, Tori Barbo, Haley Field, and Anita Sanders, and whereas the coaching staff is head coach Hillary Hodges and assistant coaches Nicole Broadway, John Wild, and Shiloh Edging. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to the 2009-10 Riverdale Lady Warrior basketball team on your accomplishments by winning the 2010 Class AAA T-Lovest AA Girls Basketball State Championship, and to Coach Hillary Hodges and her staff for their dedication and commitment to these young ladies, resolved this 13th day of May 2010. Mr. Mayor, I so move. Second by Commissioner Farley and many others. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
How about a hand for these ladies? Coach Hodges, be allowed a couple of minutes to address the commission, please. Yes, certainly. Please go.
First, we'd like to thank the county commission for having us. Behind me is a wonderful group of young ladies, and something that Mr. Jordan doesn't know, this group, we had 27 kids in our program, and 19 of them had a 3, 5, or higher the first semester, and as a team, they have a 3, 3, 5. So, that's phenomenal character. They've been great ambassadors of Riverdale High School, great ambassadors of the county, and the thing that I've been most proud of is how this group of young ladies has brought a community together, and it's been exciting. They're fun to watch. They're wonderful young women, and I look for them to be very successful in the future, and hopefully everyone will start coming out and watching them continue to succeed. They're wonderful kids, and goes to who they are, goes to the character and the dedication, because it's very tough to do what they did. I still can't believe that they did it, but it's been phenomenal, and we just appreciate this opportunity, and we appreciate you giving us this opportunity to be here.
Okay, thank you very, very much. Let's see. Next, we'll call on Commissioner Coggan for elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, you have before you a list of notaries. Mr. Chairman, I make motion to approve that list.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. All of you in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Secondly, we need to announce two vacancies on the lineball library board, and thirdly, we need to fill three vacancies on the emergency communications board. We had three nominations for that board. They were Chief Glenn Crispin, Sheriff Truman Jones, and former Representative John Hood, and, Mr. Chairman, I move for their approval.
Second, Commissioner Farley. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And last, appointment of judicial commissioners Sergio Gutierrez and Susan Keith. Mr. Chairman, I move for their approval.
Second, Commissioner McAdoo and others. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. There is no unfinished business. Mrs. Ely, we, and we're first, we have a purchasing committee report from their monthly meeting, and do we have a motion concerning that? Move approval by Mrs. Cook. Second, by Commissioner Jernigan. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, Mrs. Ely, Commissioner Ely, we have eight or nine minutes, or thereabouts, for you to start the Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee report.
Item L-2A, General Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. From the Insurance Department, increased revenue contributions and gifts, $8,500. This is part of Cigna's contract with the county, and these dollars will be used toward the employee wellness program. Other charges, $8,500. Miscellaneous, increased revenue. This amendment recognizes contributions for the fallen firefighter's monument, $4,200. Increased expenditure, other capital outlay, $4,200. Youth Services Employee Benefits. From employee benefits, employee insurance, $4,000. This is based on actual participation in our health insurance plan, going to youth services employee insurance, $4,000. Sex Offender Registry, increased revenue of $500 for increased expenditures of other charges to cover a TBI invoice of $500. From the jail, increased revenue, other direct federal revenue, recognizing the revenue from a 2009 state criminal alien assistance program grant, $18,825. Increased expenditures going to maintenance and repair of buildings, $18,825. County Buildings, Pet Adoption and Welfare Services. From Paws and Building Improvements, $53,500. Some planned improvements that will not occur this fiscal year, from undesignated fund balance, $7,500, to county buildings, building improvements for paving at the Adult Activities Center, $61,000. Resolved this 13th day of May 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jernigan. Does anyone have any questions or discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Item L-2A-7, we have an election commission resolution. For members of the committee, I will read this resolution and the related budget amendment, but I am going to alert you that I will be reading this amendment as an individual member of this commission, and I will be making the motion for approval as an individual member of the commission, because this motion was sent to the full commission from the Budget Committee without a recommendation. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the following budget amendment for the election commission be approved for the purpose of providing funding to pay legal services for the election commission and the election administrator. From Election Commission miscellaneous, engineering services, $10,000. Legal services, $15,000. Other charges, $7,500. To legal services, $25,000, and other charges, $7,500. Resolved this 13th day of May 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Sandlin. Discussion? Commissioner Williams?
I was just curious. Have we seen, do we, I haven't seen anything, an itemized bill on this?
Yes, we do have itemized bills.
Okay. Was it not passed out to any of the committees? I didn't see it on the committee or anything. We don't have an itemized bill?
It wasn't passed out to the committee, but we've had itemized bills for some time, Ms. Nolan has, certainly.
Okay. Just curious.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Thirteen yes, eight no. Motion passes.
Item L-2B, Ambulance Service Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the ambulance service fund be amended as follows. Emergency medical services, increased revenue, other charges for services, $21,625, and these are dollars from MTSU for medical coverage at various events. To increased expenditure and related benefits, $21,625. Resolved this 13th day of May 2010, and, excuse me, I probably should have said increased expenditure going to overtime pay and related benefits. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Schaefer. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, one abstained. Motion passes.
Item L-2C, a Solid Waste Sanitation Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the solid waste sanitation fund be amended as follows. Landfill operations and maintenance, increased revenue tipping fees, $40,000, increased expenditures, contracts with private agencies, $25,000 for OSUP excavating, and disposal fees, $15,000 for tire disposal. Resolved this 13th day of May 2010. I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Cook. Any discussion on this? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Item L-2D, General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendment. This amendment is showing increase in BEP funds that the system will get this year because of the state's January 2010 increase in teacher medical insurance rates. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general purpose school fund be amended as follows. Regular education program, increased revenue from basic education program, $528,000. Increased expenditures, medical insurance, $528,000. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Daniels, any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Item L-2E, a resolution authorizing property and casualty insurance renewal, whereas the property and casualty insurance are expiring July 1, 2010, and whereas it has been proposed to renew the property and inland marine coverage with Allianz at an annual cost of $360,362 to include replacement values, and which reflects a decrease to the premium of $7,228. Whereas it is being proposed to renew the crime insurance coverage with Great American at an annual cost of $8,900, which is a decrease in premium of $213, and reflects the deductible for public employee dishonesty with fateful performance increasing from $10,000 to $25,000. And whereas it is being proposed to renew the casualty insurance coverage with ACE USA at an annual cost of $643,688, which is a decrease in premium of $8,917, and reflects a payback, a payment back to Rutherford County of $7,500 to be used for safety programs. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute all necessary documents regarding the property, inland marine, crime, and casualty insurance renewals effective July 1, 2010, at a total cost of $1,012,950, plus an engineering fee of $7,500. Resolved this 13th day of May 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Daniels. Any discussion or questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
And Mrs. Ely, I believe we need to stop right here, please. And Mrs. Ely, I believe we need to stop right here, please.
Next, we have a public hearing regarding an application for a rezoning and conditional use permit by Kelly Hilton, located at 550 Barfield Crescent Road. The existing zoning is R-15. The proposed zoning is recreational commercial, C-3, and is for a conditional use permit for a sportsplex. The size of the site is approximately 10 acres. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you, and good evening, Mayor, and members of the commission. The one rezoning case we have for you tonight is a piece of property, actually two properties located along Barfield Crescent Road. The applicant's proposing to build an approximately 96,000 square foot sportsplex. This would contain two separate ice rinks and also an indoor all-purpose rink. They would be proposing a variety of uses for the rinks, such as ice skating, flag football, soccer, and ice hockey. It would also include a pro shop and concession stands. You can see the hours of operation would be Monday through Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to midnight, Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., Saturday would be 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., and then Sunday would be 7:00 a.m. to midnight. There are some existing structures on the property, including a single-family home, and there's also a welding shop that was approved for the property back in 2001, and those structures would be removed. This property is located directly across the road from Barfield Park, which is a city park, to the east and north of the property is the South Ridge subdivision, which was planted back in the early 90s, and then the property to the west is also zoned R-15. There's been a couple of neighborhood meetings with this particular application before it even got to the Planning Commission, the first of which was held in September of 2009, the second of which was held back in March of this year. There were a number of concerns that were brought up. The first draft of the plan, and actually, you have a copy of the revised draft in front of you, but the original draft actually showed the entrance to the property being on the eastern side of the property. After counseling with the neighbors, they felt that the drive would be better served on the western side of the property, so that plan, the plan, the concept plan that you're looking at right now actually does reflect that. Some other issues had to deal with the hours of operation, just why they were so long. At the March meeting, there were some concerns about the screening and lighting of the property. To that end, the Planning Commission did require an eight-foot vinyl fence on the east side of the property, with the buffet yard proposed to increase the screening. Also, on the north side, there is an existing grove of trees, which does provide good screening. However, we'd like to see as much of that preserved as possible, recognizing that with the size of this development, there's going to have to be a loss of some of that. However, with our current landscape regulations, they'd be required to provide more screening and landscaping than if they were to remove, to remove any of that. The site layout will need to be modified, based on what you're seeing there on that concept plan. They are asking for C-3 zoning, which is our commercial recreational zone. The setbacks are a little more stringent in that zone. Those are issues that, of course, can be taken care of during the site review process. What you're seeing there is just a concept plan, is not the full-blown site plan, which still have to be approved by the Planning Commission. The existing parking requirement is one thing else I'd like to talk about. The zoning resolution, the closest thing we have for anything like this is what's called an indoor, commercial indoor amusement. That parking requirement is one for every 100 square feet of floor area. Now, when you do the math, this would require about 900 to 1,000 parking spaces, which is more than we believe that this facility would ever need. Originally, at the Planning Commission, we were looking at the possibility of a parking requirement of one for every four people occupying the maximum occupancy of the building. However, upon further reflection and speaking with the applicant's representative, we've requested that they actually complete a parking study, just to get a better idea of what kind of parking needs this facility would need. We've done some research on our own. The requirements really for these types of facilities are all over the map as far as the requirements for that, so we think it would be more prudent just to take that condition out and replace it with a condition that's worded something to the effect of, well, basically that the applicant would provide a parking study just to, for our consideration, so that we would have a better idea of the parking needs of that facility. With that, the Planning Commission did have a public hearing on this. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this by unanimous vote. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have questions for Mr. Demossi?
Commissioner Jordan, are you rising?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I looked this over, and of course, I would, it's sports, and it's young people, and I'm probably going to be for this, possibly do it. The hours, however, bother me considerably. Matter of fact, they bother me more than considerably. I don't know that much good happens at 1:00 in the morning. All we've got to do is pick up the newspaper to see that, to adults, much less children driving. But I noticed on what you sent out and what you just said, that some things were addressed, and when it got to the late hours, which were addressed, this piece of paper skips over that, and you just skipped over it as well, so evidently nothing happened on the hours.
Well, there was discussion regarding it, I think, after the neighborhood meetings and even at the Planning Commission. I think there was just a general understanding, after the applicant explained the need for the late hours, that there just wasn't the discomfort with it that they had originally. Now, some of the neighbors are here and the applicant's present, and I don't want to speak for them, but I think, if I recall, the applicants were saying that, you know, a lot of the leagues and things that go on have to go on during, you know, night and work, after work hours, that kind of thing. And of course, everything is inside the building, nothing, there's no outside fields or anything like that, so noise wasn't so much a concern. I think the fact that everything was indoors and that there'd be no noise on the outside, I think that comforted the neighbors to an extent.
Okay, well, I don't know the applicant, but I would like to ask the applicant if they're going to speak, if they at least address that. It just concerns me when, the 1:00 particularly. Well, okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Do you compare this complex that's going to be proposed to be built to the one that's in Franklin, and similarity, I assume from what I've seen is the one in Franklin is a larger complex? And size-wise, how does this compare to over there?
Well, size-wise, I'm not exactly sure. We talked with, we actually contacted Franklin about the parking requirement that they had, and said, actually, that facility out there was used for the basketball facility now, that it wasn't actually used for ice rink. Again, I'm not familiar exactly with the size of the one in Franklin, but regardless, it's not even used for the ice rink anymore, according to the information they provided us.
Any other questions, or Mr. Demossi? Commissioner Farley?
Doug, in the two meetings that we had with the neighbors out there, everything that the neighbors had requested, like the fence, the lighting, and all this stuff, those are all in the conditions-
Yes, sir.
-that we'd be voting on tonight, is that correct?
That is correct.
And then some of the, and then we're going to come back and make sure through the planning process, the site plan, that all the buffering and all this stuff is entailed, right?
That is correct. Yeah, the Planning Commission will get another shot at the site plan. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Demossi, then we will declare the public hearing open with respect to this request from Mr. Kelly Hilton to change this from R-15 to recreational, commercial C-3. So, we'll invite anyone that wishes to come forward and to address this body, speaking either for or against this project. Please come forward and give us your name and address, and make your comments. Is anyone in the audience that wishes to speak? Please come forward, give us your name and address.
My wife and I live at 4016 South Ridge Boulevard, which is directly behind where this is proposed to be. We were opposed of the idea of it for many reasons, one being the late hours, and we're still worried about those kind of hours, even though it's all indoors. We were opposed to, the traffic has increased over the years on South Ridge, obviously becoming a five-lane. We moved in when it was still a two-lane road. We understand the park went in across the street, and we have baseball games going on, so we have learned to deal with a certain amount of noise, you might say. We're not opposed to the idea of what is being proposed, it's the location that I think is so wrong in the respect that the hours are late, the traffic. I question whether there's been a traffic study done to see what impact it will have. There are no lights there, and I question whether there will need to be a light put in at that point. The entrance to the Barfield Park and the entrance to where this would be, I question whether that would be, how that would work out in terms of, we see so many near accidents as it is now on that road, that I question what would happen. I'm not opposed to what he wants to do, Mr. Hilton. I'm all for sports and for the youth, and about the hours to 1:00 a.m., I just, I don't understand that. I don't understand why it needs to be that late. And neither my wife nor I do, and most of the neighbors, a lot of them didn't show up. They sort of feel defeated in the purpose of it, I think, is the reason they didn't show up. But I feel like I at least need to speak my piece on that, and for my wife and our neighbors that didn't show up. We are just worried about, we've had this view of the trees. I understand progress goes on and things change, but we've watched deer come out of the woods for the last 15 years. So that's something we're personally going to lose if it goes in. I understand progress, again, I'm not opposed to things happening for the good of a community, but we just question the location, being where it is. It's a rural kind of almost subdivision, you know? It's, again, you know, we have the park, but it's, I just think the hours and the traffic are going to be a major issue down the line. I question who's going to police the parking lot at night at 1:00 a.m.? I question who's going to maintain control of all those things? And down the line, will that make a difference in our community, in the area that we live in? It's a pretty quiet area, and I'm sure any of you who live in a neighborhood that's quiet, you appreciate that, and you appreciate, you know, again, we have the kids playing in the park across the street. My wife and I have enjoyed many years of that park, walking around the fields, and but just the idea of a sportsplex being right behind, and it's literally right behind our house, is just troubling to me. And I just question the wisdom of putting it in that particular spot, not just because I live there, but just overall, the traffic situation. I really believe there needs to be a study done of some kind to see what impact it would have in the long term. That's a major concern of ours, and the hours. I've got no issue with Mr. Hilton, or, you know, what they're trying to do. I think it's awesome. I think it's a wonderful thing to bring sports and things of that nature for the youth and for adults and everyone. It's not that kind of issue. Ron, who owns the property, has been probably one of the best neighbors you could ask to have, and so I'm not opposed to him trying to sell it and move on to another place. I just question the location for something of that nature, and if any of you know that area, you might take the time to look at it and see if it's, and again, I would like to know that there's some kind of traffic study, again, being done, something of that nature, to see what kind of impact it would have. I thank you for your time. Yes, sir.
Any question for you? That's one thing, the traffic study you're talking about, the traffic study you're talking about, that's going to be part of, I'm going to add that tonight.
Okay.
The hours, what hours are, would you?
Well, till 1:00 a.m. is just, I just, I don't see, because it's not what's going to happen inside that I'm wondering about. It's when people are leaving and the lights, and again, this is right behind our property. So, and it's, again, there are other neighbors that feel the same way, they just chose not to be here, I guess, but it's just a question. It's a question of what impact that would have as people are leaving. Is there going to be somebody, I understand there are adults probably going to be at that hour, I hope anyways, but is somebody going to police that area, so to speak, or keep track of what's going on? Because at any, you know, at that time of night, if there are a lot of people have been playing games and cars leaving, there's going to be noise. There just is. There's no way to get around it. Just questions we have, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate that very much. Now, are there others that wish to speak for or against this proposal? Come forward, please, and give us your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Dan Saltre. My firm is providing architectural, excuse me, engineering services to Mr. Hilton on the design of the project, and we met, or I met, probably about three weeks ago with Mr. Ailot with the city, because it is a city street, and the city ends right there at the property. And one of the things that is going to be required to get the final site plan approval is a traffic study. So we will do that. We have a traffic consultant that we work with on these types of things. My firm is actually designing a very similar project in Charlotte, North Carolina, and to talk about the hours of operation, we've actually done a couple of similar facilities, and it's very typical that they're open to those hours, primarily because the adult leagues can't usually start until about 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock at night. And I personally play indoor soccer, and I have games that are played during the week, on weekends, at 11:00 at midnight. So, that's the reason the hours have to be so late, because you have so many people who are playing these sports, and they can't get there until they get home from work, get to the facility, and the last games usually wrap up about midnight. You do have people leaving the facility at that time of the night. Personally, I'm so tired, I get in my car and I go home. So there's not a lot of congestion in the parking lot, and these are adults at this time of the night. It's not teenagers, it's not kids who are hanging out in the parking lot. These are people who are adults who are playing in adult leagues. Like I said, typically, they get in their cars, they go home, and you don't have a lot of people hanging out in the parking lots. One of the requirements for the conditional rezoning is the lighting, and typically when we design these facilities, and they're in a residential area, we use light fixtures that will keep the light on the property. When you look at the property, you will see light, but that light, if you're standing off of the property, that light will not migrate onto your property. There are very good light fixtures out there now that can direct light right where you want it, essentially. And Mr. Hilton is very understanding of the neighbors, and he has directed us from the beginning to make sure that we design this project and lay out the site, so that we infringe as little as possible on the neighbors. Maintain the buffer to the greatest extent possible. The eight-foot fence will help with that. As far as the roadway, we talked with, as I said, Mr. Ailot with the city, and he had a concern about the location of the road being so close to the ball field, and asked if we could look at a couple of different options. But no matter where we put it, the goal, if we move it towards the center of the property, the goal is to get it back over to the other side as quickly as possible, because we don't want people driving up along that edge of the property. But we do want to, as part of this traffic study, look at the impact of the number of cars coming in and out of the property. And as I said, that is going to be a requirement of the final site approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions I could.
Well, the night of the two meetings, one of the biggest things that we talked about, I'm going to push hard for that road to be away from the back of those houses.
Right.
That was probably one of their number-one concerns that night, was that road. So, the lighting, Doug, let me ask you a question. He's talking about lighting, is the conditions that he spoke of, that was one of the conditions that was brought up in the neighborhood meeting, is that in the conditions as well?
Yes, sir, regarding the fixtures, pointing the light down, yes, that was in here as well.
Okay. All right. But, and I know Mr. Ailot has said what he's wanting, but the road would have to be away from the back of those homes.
Right, I understand.
I mean, that's a biggie right there.
Okay, are you, have any other comments you'd like to make, sir?
No, sir.
All right, thank you, then. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak for or against this project? I don't see any- I don't see anyone rising to speak. That being the case, we're going to declare the, the public hearing closed. And do we have a motion concerning this request for this zoning change? Commissioner Farley.
Like Doug said, we, there was about two meetings, and I understand the neighbors' concerns out there, but I also understand about the zoning regulations that we've got in, in place, with there being a recreational zoning across the street. And the, and the people are asking for a recreational across the street. My understanding is they, this application meets all the requirements for our zoning regulations, is that correct? All right. With that motion, with that being said, I make a motion that we approve the request with the, with the conditions set forth. Also, too, I'd like to substitute the following for the parking provision, that the applicant will provide a staff, a, provide staff a study demonstrating the anticipated trips and parking needs of the facility.
Okay, let's, uh, would you let us have that? Did you get that, Mr. Robertson?
Yes, sir.
That way, there is a, there is a, a traffic study that's gonna be looked at in this.
Right. Are you, is that the end of the?
Yeah, and also, too, that, that the road that we were talking about going into, that the road not be behind or close to the home, the back of those homes on South Ridge Boulevard.
I'm sorry, Mr. said it again.
That the road, that the road leading into this facility not be right behind the houses along South Ridge Boulevard.
Okay, let me, let us read that back then, if, if you're, is that your last additional?
Doug, if you would, well, I, I need clarification on something. The hours that you spoke of, would you tell me those again?
Yes. Their proposed hours were Monday through Thursday from 10:00 a.m. to midnight, Friday from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., Saturday from 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., and Sunday from 7:00 a.m. to midnight.
So basically, they're all midnight except for two?
Yes, Friday and Saturday would be till 1:00 a.m.
Then, then we change the hours all to midnight?
What did you say, Commissioner?
The, the hours stop at midnight.
And the third thing that you're adding in addition to the conditions that were recommended is that the hours, the ending hours of operation be midnight for all days.
Correct.
I wanna read back the motion. You've made a motion to approve this project with conditions that have been indicated from planning, and they have listed five conditions that all of you have there. Those conditions plus the additional conditions, one, to, to add that the applicant will provide staff a study of the anticipated trips and parking needs of the, of the facility; and two, that the road leading into the facility not be right behind the houses on South Ridge Boulevard; and three, that the ending hours of operation be midnight for all open days. Is that a fair statement of what you want to include in your motion? Now, Mr., hold on just a minute, Mr. Demossi. Uh, first, we need to get a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams, now, Mr. Demossi, did you have something you wanted to say?
I did, just, uh, the condition regarding the, the parking and the, the trips, that was to replace one of the conditions that was in there regarding the parking.
Right, that's a substitute.
Right.
A substitute for the, for the following, for the parking provisions, provisions.
So, just a moment now, do you want to completely wipe off this fourth condition that was placed there and substitute that the applicant will provide staff a study of anticipated trips and parking needs of the facility? You don't want to say that it'll be one space per four patrons and one per two employees? You're removing that one and replacing with your first, uh, part of your amended motion?
Correct.
All right. All right, so we have a motion, a second. Do you understand that all right, sir? That being the case, does anyone have any questions now? Mr. Sandlin?
I had a question on the hours of operation. Could it not coincide with the ballpark across the street? I don't know what the hours of operation is on it, and it's, uh, basically recreation. I mean...
I, I'm not familiar with the hours are of the park. I don't think they're, they're open that late, but again, I, I haven't looked into what their hours of operation are, so...
I mean, my suggestion, it'd be lined up in line with that, and that way, you know, they're both recreational facilities and stuff going on right there across the street from one another, and, uh, it sounds like a...
I understand what you're saying.
The neighbors are well in tune with that already happening across the street, so they might be more...
Because my, I guess my, I guess concern's the right word, but, I mean, you're, you're looking at a couple of different types of activities. You're looking at outdoor versus indoor, whereas the outdoors may not last quite as long. Of course, they have lit ball fields, I guess they can go on fairly late, but I, I'm not familiar with what their hours are with the park.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. And Commissioner McAdoo, I didn't see you, sir.
The only thing I'm questioning on the motion with the hours, uh, tournament play. They have tournaments out there, which is not an everyday operation, but it could be a seasonal operation, and tournament play could exceed the twelve o'clock hour with the number of teams scoring and so on and so forth. To me, it looked like it would be an exception in there for tournament play. I know in the park, you asked me about the park, when they have tournaments or whatnot over there, it is an exception to the hours based on the number of teams playing, score it, score, sometime they tie, and they have to go into overtime and stuff like that, but that's the only thing I would question in that motion.
Uh, Commissioner Farley?
Well, I mean, that, there, I mean, there is gonna be tournaments, because there's gonna be people coming from, um, other, other counties and stuff. You know, it, there's gonna be times when it goes past midnight, because of, you know, you can't stop a game at midnight. I mean, there's gonna be times, but I think the, the hours of opening, I mean, they, they can't bring someone in after midnight, but someone that's already there, if it goes overtime, you just can't stop it. But I, but really and truly, I mean, I'd rather let the, the applicant address that situation or that question. If I have to, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules to let, against Mr. Hilton, uh, address that, that question.
Does the applicant wish to address the question regarding whether there should be an exception added to allow for tournament play that might extend past midnight? Uh, but we need you to come forward up here. And first of all, do I have a motion to suspend the rules? Do I have a second? Second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye? All right. Now, you may speak to us. Is this Mr. Hilton?
Yes, sir. Hello. Uh, the tournaments is basically gonna be a Thursday. Uh, it'll be evenings, the teams will start arriving on Thursdays, they'll play Friday, Friday nights, Saturday, much of the day, and through in the evenings. No games are gonna start after midnight. Uh, I will assure you, probably 10:50, probably be the last starting game, maybe 11 o'clock, give or take about an hour and fifteen minutes for a hockey game and or soccer game. So I'd imagine all the games and stuff will probably be done by 12 o'clock. The hours will put at 1:00 o'clock, because that's all the facilities in the area that's comparable to what they have. So, like the gentleman here said, you know, games do run over, people are done, they get their stuff, they get out of there. It's why we had 1:00 o'clock, so we could say, hey, you know, the games will be over, people loading their stuff up, they'll be out of the parking lot, we can have this place emptied by 1:00 o'clock, have no problems.
Mr. Commissioner Farley?
Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yeah, basically, it do, but, uh, if you have a game that started 10:15, and he's saying the hours of operation ends at 12 o'clock, so if you have a game that started 10:15, and it's going to exceed 12 o'clock, do you stop that game and clear the facility, or do you continue playing that game?
Yeah, we wouldn't stop the game. Uh, most of the games for the sports that we're gonna have in there, like I said, are gonna be about an hour, an hour and fifteen minutes. So I, I would imagine, like I said, the games will be over by 12 o'clock or right at 12 o'clock. I don't think there's gonna be any problems starting games after that, so, you know, like you were saying earlier, if they're in the facility, they're probably gonna be playing, and once they're done, they're gonna be out of there. Also, during the week, for a facility like this, that is based upon league revenue, uh, you know, we can't, we can't get a lot of, obviously, kids have school, parents work, so a lot of these games don't start till six, six-thirty, seven in the evening, and, and to have, you know, four or five games a night, you have to run them till, up till ten, ten-thirty, eleven o'clock. That's why the hours are so late. I, I know the neighbors may not like that, but that, that's kinda how it has to be, or these facilities don't make it. They wouldn't survive.
Okay, any other questions?
But, like I said earlier, I don't foresee, if, if you had a game start at 11 o'clock, and the game is still going at 12:15, you're gonna still be playing the game. You're not gonna shut the game down.
No, sir.
Okay. Well, uh, do y'all wanna ask this gentleman more questions before he leaves here?
I'm just gonna say, according to the motion on the floor, you, your building needs to have doors locked, everybody out at midnight, so we need to address his desires or what, because that motion says 12 o'clock, shut down, lights out, doors locked, and he can operate like that with 11 o'clock game.
Well, technically, I think Mr. Jordan is correct there, Mr. Farley. It's, um, either you're open for business or you're not now, so you need to put some ability in here to allow for some margin of overrun. Let's let Mr. Schaefer see what he says about this.
My question gets back to the entrance. Uh, and, to me, right behind the, the houses on South Ridge, that leaves a lot of open room. I, you know, personally, I think the concept that's shown there is great for all those houses, the way that they've designed it. But I tell you, right behind, that's pretty nebulous. That's as much nebulous as saying we're shutting down at midnight, but if the game's still going, go ahead and finish it. And I, unless we get some clarification, I can't vote for it. I don't think the guy wants it if he, uh, if he doesn't have someplace that he can work with.
Well, Mr. Schaefer, uh, the site plan that we're looking at, Mr. Farley, shows that road on the very western part of the property, and that would accomplish what you're suggesting, would it not?
Yes, sir.
Well, I would like to see, you know, it said, instead of right behind the houses on South Ridge, that we go with the concept that is, is, uh, planned that's shown to us tonight, then. I think that's great.
Commissioner, Mr. Farley, we need to let some of these others that haven't spoken, you can come back. Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since I made the first complaint about the hours, I guess I better comment that, Commissioner Farley, I, I appreciate those, those remarks and the, and the change to, to midnight, and also what Mr. McAdoo said, the adults, I realize that these are gonna have to be a number of adults there and, and probably participating, however, some of these sports are, are coming on for our youth, and the 1:00 o'clock bothered me considerably. Soccer, this gives soccer a place to play inside, which is great, which you can't do a lot of the year, and ice hockey is a sport that also is becoming quite popular in our high schools, which means we, we are gonna have some youngsters there. Commissioner Farley, I would just say, maybe, just a thought, some, uh, even major league baseball teams, a lot of them have no inning will start after a certain time. And, uh, if, if, if the gentleman, Mr. Hilton, will agree to 11 o'clock start for the last game on that field, um, I believe I can vote for this as well. And I wanna vote for it, Mr. Hilton, you understand? I'm, and I also want this to be a success. This is, this is a tough business right here, and I, I want it to be a success. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, more questions of this gentleman, Mr. Farley?
I, I understand, I understand what you're saying, I understand what the neighbors are saying, and I also understand what Mr. Hilton is saying. If there's a game going on, you kids can't go in there and stop the game. We all know that, you know, um...
Well, the way I see it is 11 o'clock, I mean, that's something we can live with, but once again, you know, there's things that happen in sports, you know? Guy twists his ankle playing ice hockey, take a fifteen-minute break, the game may run over. So for us to say we're gonna be locked up, the lights out at 12:00 midnight, it's gonna be impossible to operate a facility like that.
But if we put in there that no game will start after 11 o'clock, that's something that I think the neighbors can live with, and I think that's something that the business can live with.
No, I, I think that's fine Monday through Thursday, but, you know, you have the weekends, and there's gonna be a lot of teams coming from out of town, there's gonna be a lot of people there, you know? 11 o'clock, I think, on the weekends kinda pushes it, because you're gonna have, you know, you can have any time up to sixty, seventy teams from out of town, and, you know, you gotta run those games right up to each other, and, and to stop it right at 11 o'clock on the weekends is, it's gonna be pretty tough to try to get all those teams in tournament-wise.
On, on, on a...
Friday and Saturday.
On a Friday and Saturday, um, we had 1:00 o'clock at closing on those nights, is that correct?
That was in the original proposal.
I mean, I, I see, you know, tournaments, you know, I'm sure everybody here's been to a tournament for their kids, so on and so forth, and they know it can run late, anything can happen. If, you know, there's a game at, you know, say we have to push back the next day, then that kinda screws a lot, a lot of things up, you know? People wanna go to church, so on and so forth, so it's like, you know, I mean, if we can, if we can keep it to 11 o'clock on the week, and, you know, maybe have some exceptions on the weekends, say maybe 11, 11:30, then that's something we can do.
Well, what would do this?
Well, we need to finish with him first.
Yes.
Any other questions? Mr. Hilton? All right, thank you, Mr. Hilton, then.
Thank you.
We will go back into regular session, then. Now, I want to remind you, we do have a motion, and it's very specific, and, and a second. So, Mr. Farley, uh...
No game will start Monday through Thursday after 11 o'clock. Friday and Saturday, no game will start after 11:30.
And you're not, you're removing the, the fact that it has to close by midnight? You're just, you're putting this now condition on when a game can start?
Right.
You need to give us a moment to get this in here and read it back to you, and see if it says what you want to. And, Mr. Farley, while you're there, would you allow us to suggest changing this, where this road would be located, that your motion include that the road be located on the westernmost, western boundary of the property?
Well, that's what I was talking about a while ago, and you may have misunderstood me, Commissioner Schaefer, but what I didn't want to happen was, I did not want that road, it started out right behind the homes on South Ridge. The neighbors and I thought it needed to be moved over more towards Barfield, towards, towards the west, and that's what they did in their, in their, uh, their site plan, that's what they, that's what they've done. And that's what my intent was on the motion that I'd made earlier.
Okay, well, let's, let's stop here just a moment, and as soon as Mr. Robertson, so we can read back, and someone can tell us if this is what you wanna do, please. Now, we have a motion to substitute the parking provision condition to require that the applicant provide staff a study demonstrating anticipated trips and parking needs of the facility. We still say that the road not be right behind the houses on South Ridge Boulevard. Thirdly, we say that no game will start after 11:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, and no game will start after 11:30 p.m. on Friday and Saturday. Now, Mr. Farley, what else do you want to do to that, uh, motion? Do you wanna suggest anything different about that road situation?
If it will help clear up what Commissioner Schaefer's talking about, we can go with this, we can, it can be done just like the site plan is showing now. And I think Doug may have a...
I think what the, when the engineer gentleman was up here a little earlier, I think when he was referring to looking at a couple of different options, I spoke with Dana Richardson today at the city, uh, traffic director, uh, he had some concerns about the proximity of the two entrances from Barfield Park and then to the, to this proposal, and I think what, what he was referring to is probably the shifting of the entrance, not necessarily the whole drive, but shifting of the entrance a little bit, just to create a little more separation. It's about a hundred and seventy-five, roughly.
So the whole road will not be going?
Right, I think that, that was kind of what I would expect, but, you know, you'd see an entrance, and then it would still kinda veer to the, to the west. Now, I don't, I haven't seen the options that they're talking about.
But I, I don't think the entrance oughta come down there by, as you turn in, right there behind those houses?
Right, and I don't know if that was, yeah, I, I don't think that they really wanted to go that far. to go that far over. I mean, of course, the, the traffic staff probably wants to see the further over the better, but of course, that, like you said, that was one of the main issues that, that a lot of the neighbors had, was that drive being right there. They don't want to see that so close. I mean, I think there's a happy medium between separation there, of course, you have to remember South Ridge Boulevard is right there, you don't want it too close to that, so I think there's a, a little play area that they could, you know, play space that they could, they could use in there, but as far as moving that entrance around just a little bit, but keeping the, the road.
We need to get some specific language here. We have to deal with something very specific. So, do you have any changes you wish to make to what I just read off there, Mr. Farley?
Yes.
About not be right behind the houses, or to be at least X feet away from the property line of those houses? I don't know what you want to do.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Schaefer, yes, sir?
Okay, what I'm really mean, the front footage on that property is two-hundred-and-twenty feet. Why can't we just say the western side of the property, which is going to keep away from the right behind the term that you're using, okay? And it cuts out, that means that they got to put it on the western side, which stays away from the houses, too.
Well, that's fine, what I, my point is, I don't want it, I do not want that road behind those houses, and if that will take care of, that's fine.
Well, the western side of the property is the farthest point away from those houses. Is that correct, Mr. Demosie?
It, it would be, yes, but, but the concern, I think, I was trying to relay, was that there, the city has some concerns about it being too close to the entrance of Barfield Road, of Barfield Park, and, you know, just from a safety standpoint, trying to keep them as far apart as possible, while at the same time being the intent of not having that drive up against the neighbors on the east, so that balance there.
What have we got to do, and what have we got to put in there to make that happen?
Well, I think the, the best way to, to word something like that would probably be, you know, provide the entrance drive and access drive to the parking area, to the, as far west on the property as, as possible, and as safety dictates. I, I think that would be the way to handle that, because if you just say, well, it has to be over here, and then Murphy, the city of Murfreesboro comes back and says, well, we think that's too close, we really don't want to approve a permit here for a curb cut, it needs to be over just a little bit, that would give us a little bit of wiggle room in there, but still keeping that drive on that side of the, of the property.
Okay, all right, that, that, Brad, Brad, have you got that?
We'll, we'll get it. Mr. Phillips, did you want to say something?
Yeah, but I don't know what to say exactly, the, I, I don't even know where the original motion from the planning commission has gone. It's, it's become lost to me in this process. I would really like to clean that up, I'd like to have a motion either to accept or reject the planning commission's recommendation, and then I'd like to see these amendments added to it, so we could vote on the amendments separate to all of this stuff together, because to me, voting against this is going to be voting against the, all of these amendments that Commissioner Farley and some others have suggested. I'd like to see it cleaned up, I'd like to see a motion, and then I'd like to see amendments, so I could vote on the amendments without voting against the motion.
All right, thank you. All right, we've got a, we do have a motion in a second, but you've tried to amend it even again, Mr. Farley, so I don't know whether I should read this. Let me see, Mr. Phillips, if I can read what I think Mr. Farley has said to us, as far as his motion, then he'll have to let me know. His motion is to approve this project contingent upon those recommended conditions that came forth from the planning commission, with the exception of one, and that one regarding parking, he's made a motion to substitute and replace that provision that was in the recommendation with the language that the parking provision condition to require that the applicant provide staff a study demonstrating anticipated trips and parking needs of the facility. Now, that's all he's done to the original motion recommendation from the planning commission. Subsequent to that, he's done two other things, that the road must be located at the furthermost western side of the property as possible, and secondly, he's added another condition, that no game will start after eleven PM Monday through Thursday, and no game will start after eleven-thirty PM on Friday and Saturday, and I would make note, Mr. Farley, that we should have said Sunday through Thursday, because they are going to be open on Sunday, so we should include that. So, no game will start after eleven PM Sunday through Thursday. So, you're going to have the original five recommended conditions with the parking one replaced, and two more conditions added regarding the road and the time for which no game will start. Is that your motion, Mr. Farley? And I don't, and the maker of the second, is that acceptable?
Yeah.
All right, now, we can vote that down, and then, Mr. Commissioner Phillips, we can start over, but that sort of cleans up what he was trying to say, I believe. Now, Commissioner Hall?
We get a negative outcome to the study, where's that, who's that going to, if we approve this tonight? He's asking for a parking study.
That would be, I mean, that would be this, yeah.
We pass it tonight, he's done, he's get, he's rolled off with. Why would we not need to defer this and get a study back and see, you get the results?
I think, no, I think the study would, would allow staff to, to move forward with the site plan review. Again, this is still going to have to be considered by the planning commission. That issue, as far as the parking and everything, I think is more of an administrative function of staff, we can handle that through the planning commission, that I don't think that would have to come back through us, or you.
Okay, I don't know exactly how clear you are on where we are. Commissioner Phillips?
Okay, I guess some of it's cleared up. I still have some heartburn over, what if you bring in a regional tournament? You've got folks in here from Georgia, and Alabama, and Mississippi, and they're playing a tournament Saturday afternoon, the lights go out for a couple of hours, and you're not going to finish till two o'clock in the morning. What are you going to ask those folks to do? I think to, to say you can't do this, or you can't do that, is absolutely positively not going to work. They're not going to do it at the ballfields across the, the way, they're not going to do it at, at high schools, they're not going to do it anywhere, and I'm just not real sure that, that that's a smart thing for us to do.
All right, thank you. Other comments? Well, just a minute, Commissioner Farley, we've got several other people that want to address this, let's give them a bit of a shot. Commissioner Sparks?
Real quick, I, I understand what Commissioner Farley's trying to do, and, and, but the site plan, to me, looks great. It looks like the developers tried to work with the homeowners the best they could, but one thing that I want to point out, that I think maybe the, the commission's not seeing is, is the, is just the vision that this, that this Mr. Hilton has for, for bringing this facility here. You know, a lot of kids aren't playing tennis, they don't play football, they don't play baseball, they don't play basketball, and, but they may play hockey. So, he's bringing an opportunity to this county that's not costing the taxpayers anything. You know, we spend money for, for tennis courts, we spend money for football stadiums, for baseball, basketball gymnasiums, but here's a private gentleman that's bringing something in that's not costing taxpayers anything, and I, I just, I just want to compliment you for your vision. Things have been so slow here in Rutherford County that you don't see that much commercial development, but I just think that, and I know the commission's working with you, I know Commissioner Farley's working with you, but I just, my hat's off to you for having the vision and the, and the opportunity that you're going to bring to, to the youth of this, of this county, but, I mean, I'm in, I'm in agreement, the, the one o'clock, seems late to me, but I don't play hockey, you know, but, I mean, but I just think it looks, looks great. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wish to speak? Commissioner Farley? Oh, excuse me, Commissioner Johnson?
I don't mean any offense to anyone, but seems like we strained at a nap and we've just swallowed a camel. I mean, the nap being the time of operation indoors, that should be the least of your problems, and if you put the correct lighting outside, you shouldn't have problems running even around the clock, but I, I know you don't want to do that, but the camel being, no turn lane. To me, that's the issue, is no turn lane out there. Now, I've been told in committee that, yes, you have a turn lane, well, yeah, you do, but going the other way, if you're going to turn right into this establishment, you're going to be turning right off the road, and I know there's a, a center turn lane, but that doesn't help anyone with traffic backing up back towards, what is that, the main highway?
Two thirty-one.
Two thirty-one. That doesn't help those people at all. They're going to back up, when you have these regional tournaments, or even the small tournaments, tournaments are not small, they bring in a lot of people, a lot of spectators, a lot of participants. To me, the issue is the turning lane, and it hasn't even been addressed. We're, we're looking possibly for Murfreesboro to address that, but like I've said before, we need to take care of our own.
If I could just address that, I, again, I spoke with Dana Richardson a little earlier today, and we talked a little bit about the, the need or possibility for having a right turn lane. The traffic study that the applicant is going to have to prepare for the city, as far as showing their curb cuts and everything, will help them determine whether or not a turn lane would be required, so that, that document will, will, will take care of that, so.
Well, I understand that this is a city street in front of this establishment, but this establishment, they're, they're coming to the county to build this on, on county property, right? Not county property, but it's in the county, so to me, even though that city street is in front of it, we should still address the traffic, and maybe work with the city of Murfreesboro, but still, to me, the ball's in our court, no pun intended, but to me it is. I just feel like we're kind of sloughing the issue and leaving it to Murfreesboro to do our job, and I, I just don't like that part of it.
I agree with what you're saying as far as, you know, that, you know, that, of course, that this is a county property, as far as the, the fact that it is in the county, not in the, the city limits of Murfreesboro. I mean, a better approach here, since it is a city road, I mean, if we require something outright that the city will not allow, that essentially is going to kill the project. Now-
That's why I said we should be working with the city, not making the decision.
Right, and that's what we, that's what we are going, that's what we are planning on doing, that's why I called Mr. Richardson today, was to discuss that with them. That traffic study will be reviewed by them, I mean, I'm sure we'll get a copy of it, too. I mean, this, we, we plan on cooperating with the city on that subject.
So, after the city makes their decision on the turn lane or, or traffic, then it's still going to be back to the county to make the final decision?
Well, if the, I mean, if, if you were to make a requirement that a turn lane be placed, okay, regardless of the outcome of any kind of a study, then, again, the city may look at it and say, well, it's not required, but we don't mind having it there, so, yes, you can go ahead and put it in. In that regard, yes, I mean, the county would still have the final say-so on that. Now, if it becomes a situation where the city looks at the report that comes back and says, for these reasons, we don't want a turn lane there, even though county, you have required it, then we kind of have an impasse there. We have the county saying we want a turn lane, and we have the city saying you're not putting it on our road, and, you know, I don't know who wins that battle at that point, but, so, again, that's why we are cooperating with the city to our, the best of our ability, since it's a county project, yes, but it is on a city road.
Well, again, in committee, I was accused of being anti-growth, and, and I didn't want businesses coming through, and that's to the contrary. I've always supported businesses and industries, just business in general coming in, but there is a cost of doing business, and I appreciate the gentleman coming and, and before us, and with his great idea, it is a great idea, but there are costs to doing business, and that's the only reason I bring up these safety issues. It's not to put a blockade in front of anyone, but I just don't like seeing people get necessarily be injured or killed, when we could have done something here.
Okay, Commissioner Farley?
Commissioner Johnson, that is one of the reasons why we've asked for this study, to determine what those traffic needs are, because we don't want someone hurt or, or killed, I know I don't, and others don't either, but that's, that's one of the very reasons for this study. The, the tournaments coming in, I mean, this thing has been, been got out of hand, basically. The tournaments coming in, that's understandable, what, what you said, Commissioner Phillips. A while ago, what I was trying to work was a compromise between the neighbors and the business. Knowing that they've met the zoning regulations that they've asked for under our, under our zoning regulations, I was just trying to compromise, and when I said something about that. Knowing they're not going to stop a game if the game's already started, whether it be tournament, or whether it be regular, I'm going, I just, I'm going to leave the motion the way it is, and, and move on.
Okay, Commissioner Cook?
I'm going to call for the question here in just a minute. There is five lanes there in front of Barfield Park, if I remember correctly. Two forty-one has five lanes. Why can't they turn without all this rigging and row about, we need an extra turning lane? I mean, that's the way I'm seeing it, and the way I remember it well, and it's, it's there already, and this man is bringing in extra property tax, he's bringing in extra sales tax, and we need it, and not a thing has been issued, said about what he can bring to the county, and this is what I'm looking at. We need to let this man do what he can do for us, and we need to work with him, and, and not have all these issues, and I call for the question.
Do we have a second? Who is that? Commissioner Sparks? All in favor of calling for the question, please say aye. Are there any opposed? Question's been called for. We're ready to vote. Does anyone need the motion read again?
Would you?
Would you, oh, I shouldn't have offered. Well, the motion is to accept the condition from the planning commission, except to substitute the parking provision condition to require that the applicant provide staff a study demonstrating anticipated trips and parking needs of the facility, and to add the condition that the road must be located at the furthermost western side of the property as possible, and to add that no game will start after eleven PM Sunday through Thursday, and no game will start after eleven-thirty PM on Friday and Saturday. That is the motion. If that is clear, we are ready to vote, please cast your votes.
Anyone that does not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Okay, record the votes.
Eighteen yes, three no, motion passes.
Okay, you have a couple of other things that's not on the agenda, you want to make announcements?
Yes, sir, just a couple of announcements real fast, just to let the public watching and commissioners know, tomorrow, we're going to be having a, our kind of, our makeup meeting for our comprehensive plan steering committee. We're supposed to have it on the third, of course, with the flooding over the, the past couple of weekends ago, we decided to postpone that. It's going to be a, a working lunch meeting, as opposed to a, a full-blown steering committee that we've been used to seeing, but that'll be tomorrow at noon in our mezzanine meeting room. I think you've all received an email message to that effect earlier this week. Also, just for the board's consideration and, and information, part of our work program for this year was revisions to the sign, or sign regulations. We have completed our first draft of that, there is a copy that, you can obtain it from our website. We're going to be having a work session on this with the planning commission at our May twenty-fourth meeting, that'll be at nine o'clock in the morning, and that'll be over at, again, our mezzanine meeting room, but if, if, like I said, it's on our website, if you'd like a copy of it, it's just a draft at this point, also, or if you just want to come by the office and grab a copy, we, we can do that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demosie. Now, I believe, Commissioner Ely, we're ready to continue with your report.
We are ready for item L two F, a resolution authorizing the two thousand eleven health and dental insurance rates. Whereas it is being proposed to increase the health insurance premium rates for active employees with option one by five percent effective January one, two thousand eleven, in order to maintain a sufficient reserve in the employee insurance fund. Whereas it is being proposed that the health insurance premium for option one of pre-sixty-five retirees be increased by fifty- retirees be increased by fifteen percent, and the premium for option two of pre-65 retirees be increased by five percent. And whereas it is being proposed that the health insurance premiums for the post-65 retirees be increased by nine percent. And whereas the following monthly health insurance premium rates are being proposed, and you have that table in front of you. And whereas it is being proposed that the dental insurance premium rates be increased by two percent, and you have that table also at the bottom of that page. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the employee health insurance premiums and the dental premiums as listed herein be approved effective January 1, 2011. Resolve this 13th day of May, 2010. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Commissioner Jordan. Is there any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote? Anyone that would like to change your vote? You may do so now.
Record the votes.
Seventeen yes, one no. Motion passes.
Item L-2G, a resolution regarding Gadsby 45 liability for other post-employment benefits. Whereas at the regular meeting on February 12, 2009, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners adopted three resolutions relative to other post-employment benefits in order to comply with Gadsby Statement 45, and in order to reduce the annual required contribution. And whereas the previous three resolutions that have been adopted dealt with newly hired employees, future post-65 retirees, and non-grandfathered employees aged 60 to 64, and all current post-65 retirees and eligible employees with 30 years of service. And whereas in order to reduce the annual required contribution, the ARC, the following proposals are being made affecting current active employees relative to participation in the county's health insurance plan after retirement. Number one, new hires. After June 30, 2010, Rutherford County will contribute $300 per month, or the actual cost of coverage, whichever is less to each retiree. Benefits will end with Medicare eligibility. Eligibility requirements are age 60 with 20 years of service and 15 years on the plan, or any age with 30 years of service and 15 years on the plan. Two, zero to seven years of service as of June 30, 2010, pre-65 and post-65s. Retiree receives a monthly stipend of $500 toward insurance premiums for participation in the county plan or any other medical plan. Post-65 plan will not include pharmacy. Eligibility requirements are age 60 with 20 years of service and 15 years on the plan, or any age with 30 years of service and 15 years on the plan. Number three, seven to 10 years of service as of June 30, 2010. Pre-65 and post-65s, the retirees pay 50% of the adequate rate for themselves and 75% of the adequate rate for dependents. Post-65 plan will not include pharmacy. Eligibility requirements are age 60 with 20 years of service and 15 years on the plan, or any age with 30 years of service and 15 years on the plan. Number four, 10 to 20 years of services as of June 30, 2010. Pre-65 and post-65s, retiree pays 50% of adequate rate. Post-65 plan will not include pharmacy. Eligibility requirements are age 60 with 20 years of service and 10 years on the plan, or any age with 30 years of service and 10 years on the plan. And number five, grandfather all employees who have earned eligibility to current plans as of June 30, 2010. And six, 20 to 30 years of service as of June 30, 2010, no change. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the levels of eligibility as listed herein, at which current active employees will be allowed to participate in Rutherford County's health insurance plan after retirement, shall take effect upon adoption of this resolution. Resolve this 13th day of May, 2010. I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Daniels. Mr. Farley?
Seems like we've already had, have we not already passed the new hires, the zero to seven years, the seven to 10 years?
We did new hires, the new hires and the post-65.
We never did...
We never did the middle.
We hadn't done two and three, but we've done one and four.
We haven't done any of these, except for, number one, there is a change. We did address new hires this, as of February 19, 2009, we made some, we made a cutoff there. The difference between that and this date is that the benefits will end with Medicare eligibility.
So once they turn 65, they lose their insurance?
Well, they go to Medicare.
Benefits, the post-65 benefits end when they're eligible for Medicare. Commissioner Williams?
I'm just wondering how much information was disseminated between the employees to give them heads up on that. I've had some calls that people didn't know about it, but we don't all know about everything, but I was just, if you could expand on what notices and things have been put out.
I will. One of the things that the mayor did in discussing all this OPEB was to make sure that the insurance committee was televised to get the information out. We really couldn't put out to the population, "This is what the commission decided," because the commission had decided, but it has been an ongoing discussion for two years.
Please cast your votes. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Schaefer, I rose quickly there.
I just wanted to mention this Gadsby. That's what we, as a county, are required to pay when these people retire. We're getting to be a larger county, there are more employees. This reduces our liability significantly with what we have, are going to have to have in reserves, so to speak, to pay. And we talked about this last year, early last year, for the whole time, we passed two of them. And this is, it's got to be done. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. And it's for the good of the county, it's for the good of the people, so they do have some medical insurance later on.
All right, thank you. If there's no other discussion, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote? Anyone that would like to change your vote? You may do so now.
Record the votes.
Eighteen yes, two no, one abstain. Motion passes.
Item L-2A, a resolution authorizing assistance to firefighters grant application.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Ely, I just wanted to bring up a point, and I was, kind of did that in Budget the other night, but shouldn't we address L-2M before we address H or J in this agenda packet here? It seems like if M doesn't happen, these other two is really kind of mute.
Well, are you making a motion to amend the agenda?
Yes, sir, I do that.
To just what you said? Do we have a second? Is that Commissioner Sparks? Any discussion? Basically, what he's saying is we would next address item L-2M, is that correct?
And then, after that, everything would be in the order as on the agenda?
And then, following that, we would continue as the rest of the agenda is outlined.
Yeah, I would say yes.
All in, if there's no more discussion, all of you in favor of that, please say aye. Those opposed? That we don't have enough here to know what the vote is. Please cast your votes. I told them to please cast the votes, Ms. Secretary.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote? Anyone that would like to change your vote? You may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen yes, two no. Motion passes.
Okay, we are ready for item L-2M. Commissioner Simmons, that is correct, right? A resolution to create the Rutherford Fire and Rescue Department. Whereas Tennessee Code Annotated 5-17-101A authorizes the county legislative body to form a new agency to be known as the Rutherford County Fire and Rescue Department for the purpose of providing fire protection services to the county. Whereas Rutherford County has a need for a countywide fire department to provide fire protection and rescue services in the unincorporated areas of Rutherford County. And whereas the county legislative body of Rutherford County recognizes the vulnerability of the county to emergencies and disasters in the county. And whereas the county legislative body of Rutherford County is desirous that emergency services be provided to all Rutherford County citizens. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session, that Section 1 pursuant to the provisions of Tennessee Code Annotated Section 5-17-101A at SEC, there is hereby created a countywide fire department to be known as the Rutherford County Fire and Rescue Department, which shall have the powers and duties set forth in Tennessee Code Annotated Section 5-17-102 at SEC. Section 2, the unincorporated area of Rutherford County is designated a fire service district. Section 3, the Rutherford County Fire and Rescue Department shall be funded exclusively from revenues generated by CITUS-based taxes collected in unincorporated areas of the county. Revenues from other sources which have already been shared with municipalities, or from donations or charitable contributions. Beginning July 1, 2010, funds for the use of the Rutherford County Fire and Rescue Department shall be allocated and appropriated to the department which shall be created within the general fund. Revenues shall be allocated to the Rutherford County Fire and Rescue Department and appropriated to the use of the Rutherford County Fire and Rescue Department through the regular budgetary and appropriations process of Rutherford County, Tennessee, subject to the restrictions provided by this resolution. Resolve this 13th day of May, 2010. I move for approval.
Second. Second from Commissioner Hall and others. All right, discussion? Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Chairman, could someone explain to everyone what CITUS-based taxes are?
We will allow Mrs. Nolan to address that, please.
The CITUS-based tax are the taxes that are generated just in the unincorporated areas. An example of that is the local sales tax, hall income tax, there's TVA tax, alcohol beverage tax. Those are just a few.
Does that answer your question, sir? Commissioner Cook?
This is starting a new department in the county.
This is the beginning of the discussion to start a new department. Assuming it is funded in the, it goes through the budgeting process, and the commission decides that they want to actually fund it, then it would be actually established. All this is doing right now is putting us in a position to apply for grants through the assistance for firefighters' grants. We can't apply unless we have taken a step to say that we're intending to become a, have a county fire department.
What about the volunteer fire departments? What's going to happen to those and the rescue squads?
They continue in their current role. Now, there is a plan that all of you haven't seen yet, I suppose. We put it, I think, in most of the commissioners' boxes, that three of these entities, two volunteer fire departments and one rescue squad, have agreed to basically discontinue their charter and fold them together into one operation, which would be the base beginning of this fire/rescue department. The others would continue in their current role, and they would be, we would have agreements with them to provide services in their current areas.
I'm not, I don't think I'm for this, because this has been an undercurrent for the 20 years that I have been on here, to have a fire chief for the county and not have the volunteer fire departments and not have the rescue squads.
Well, that's not the intent here. This couldn't work without them, could not work without them, and they must be, continue to be supported and encouraged in the whole process. Other questions? Mr. Johnson?
Excuse me for not asking this as a second part of my question, but the CITUS-based taxes, do you have a total amount that amounts to now? I know it's kind of off the cuff, but...
That's okay.
How much is that today, and where are those being, where are those taxes being expended now?
These are taxes that are already in the general fund. And we've got about $400,000 from sales tax, and there's about $190,000 from income tax, $200,000 from alcohol beverage tax. So in one aspect, you can say, I mean, these taxes are what's going into the general fund, but they're not specific to anything. And what with this plan, we'd say, "Okay, these dollars that came from this, these sources are going to be used to fund..."
So we're going to earmark these?
Yeah, in a sense, you'll earmark it. And as I was going through, right now, you've, in the past, we've done $30,000 a year for the rescue squads and the volunteer fire departments, so that's $420,000. So when you say, "Right now, we're spending about $420,000 a year in the general fund toward the volunteers," if you then say, "Okay, now, all of that is going to be, you know, in a county fire department," your revenues are already there. You're just now saying, you're just now earmarking and saying, "Okay, these CITUS dollars that we have never appointed to anything, it's going into the general fund to fund something. It's not specific." We will then be specific and say, "These dollars are the ones that we're going to be funding the fire."
So these funds are already being spent in our budget yearly?
And we're already spending $420,000 a year toward fire.
Okay, well, I guess I'm, just got a little bit confused where I wasn't before I stood up, but, Mr. Mayor, I understood you to say that the volunteer fire departments would still exist as they are now, so that $400,000 would still be going to them, would it not?
That's included in what she was just explaining to you there. They would still get their same amount of money that we're proposing, even, you know, they've been getting currently. That's part of the total process.
Right, but we're taking, we're still, we can't put that $400,000 into the new fire department, because we're putting that where it's already been with the volunteers.
Well, the new fire...
So we've got to withdraw that. We can't, we can't have it two different places.
We're basically funding the, quote, county little piece of it with these three entities that have agreed to fold theirs in, so they won't be getting an additional contribution. Their contribution will go into the support of the new little group, which will only have one employee, that being a fire chief.
But, Ms. Nolan, what you, what I understood you to say was that that $400,000 was going into the amount of money that we were funding the new department out of. But we'd have to keep that separate. We couldn't say, "Okay, we're already spending that there, so now we're rolling it over here," because we're not going to roll it over. It's going to stay where it was with the volunteers.
It is, but what we'll probably do is move that line item where we fund the volunteer fire department, which is in a miscellaneous line item, and move it over into the function so that all your firefighting expenses are all together in one budget. so that all your firefighting expenses are all together in one budget.
It just seems, I mean, I understand the concept, but it just seems that we're, I think, more than just me is not understanding exactly how much money we are going to be putting into this budget for the new department.
It'll take about $30,000 of new money in addition to what we're currently spending to make this happen.
Yeah, well, had it estimated 20.
You said 20, 20 to 30.
Commissioner Sandin.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners raised a lot of questions in budget the other night about this as well as I've gotten with Mr. Farley and talked with him. Not Gary Farley, his brother Larry Farley. He's the coordinator for the firefighters and doing a great job. And we, you know, we needed that position there to help coordinate these 11 different groups of volunteer firefighters. And let me say at the beginning, if it wasn't for our volunteer firefighters throughout the history of Rutherford County here and helping us fight fires and protecting the rural county and some city too, we would be lost. And they have saved a lot of lives, a lot of structures, and done a fine job for a number of years, number of years. What I'm concerned about is starting another department. What I'm concerned about also is how much it's going to cost. And I realize that it's probably not going to cost us anything if we get these grants and we roll this other money into this line item deal, then it's not going to cost anything this year. With any department, it's going to grow and it should in this situation. I can sit here and argue just as much for safety, of course, as I can argue for or against starting a whole new department and expenses that come along with that. I'm really worried about a lot of different things. Continuously getting grants to fund this department because from my understanding, we cannot use property tax dollars to fund this department at all. Is that correct?
Right.
Correct.
So this CITUS-based tax that we have already collected and have been collecting for years, like the beer tax and everything else that you'd said, and sales tax, we are spending those dollars to a certain degree in the budget somewhere. So if you take this million dollars out, or $900,000 out, or $800,000, whatever it is, it adds up to that collection. We're going to have to replace that somewhere because we're borrowing from over here. We've got to put it back over here because we're spending it, for sure. That I'm worried about. Also, within the plan itself that I got and looked over, and I hopefully, y'all had looked at that also, it's got mentioned in there that we may start a whole new tax someday, some future. I mean, it's not now, of course, but to actually fund this department. I have an issue with that. But like I said, you know, what is it worth too? You save one family, you save one life. It's all worth it. I think we have to draw a line in the sand though and see where, you know, when can we afford it? Can we ever afford it? Can we ever not afford it? That's something we have to make a decision on tonight. And that's really before we got into these other things. And I appreciate the chairman and Commissioner Ely to move on down and let's attack this line item first because the others, is that going to be, are we going to get that every year? Or, you know? I think there's just a lot of uncertainties here. I think there's some fire departments that want to jump in and do this right now. And they want to, and I think they'll do a good job. I think Mr. Farley will do a good job. He's done a good job before. And it may be the turn that we need to be looking at, but I don't think we can afford it. But then again, I've got to ask myself a question. I don't know if we can afford it, you know? So it's a tough decision. I've had a lot of confusion about it. That's why I've talked to Mr. Farley and even Gary a little bit and Ms. Nolan a little bit. And, you know, I want to hear y'all's comments and y'all's collective thoughts about this because I'm really torn about this because I know it's going to cost this county a lot, but what is it going to do on the other side as far as positive as well?
I want to make a little bit of response and then you two guys can come next. It's going to cost us only what this commission approves it's going to cost. And this process, this time, is only $20,000 to $30,000 a year more. I'm concerned about cost. You all know that full well. I'm concerned about safety. Our volunteer fire departments have done a wonderful job. We all know that. This is not about that. As much as it is about, the area that Rutherford Rescue Squad is covering is huge. And they're not equipped, staffed, and don't have the resources to do that. This is a redistribution of those responsibilities. And this is done in partnership with the volunteer fire departments. That's exactly how this is going to work. They're going to help us redistribute the responsibilities for rescue. Now, I think this is crucial to the future of this county. It's too large for us not to have a more coordinated, a better equipped, a better trained, a better supported set of resource volunteers out there. We must continue to use those people. We have to continue to use them. This is going to enhance our participation and partnership with them. Commissioner Jernigan.
Well, I talked to volunteer fire department that's part of the area that I represent as Kettle. They invited me out there and talked to them and they encouraged me to vote for this because it's getting harder and harder for them to keep qualified people. These guys are spending tons of their own time and money going to school, staying qualified. And I asked a question budgetary the other night. And the way it was put to me, if you don't move forward on some of this, you can't apply for the grants. So if you quit applying for the grants and you don't get them and you ain't got no volunteer fire department, what are you going to do? So you're between a rock and a hard place, the way I see it. So if we can't apply for the grants, we ain't made certain things, we shooting our own seven foot. So I don't know what you got much choice to do it at this time. Now, when it gets on down the road and they start adding, talking about a fire tax or something like that, then that's, that may be a different thing. But at this point right here, what they're talking about, you've got to do these things, from my understanding, apply fees grants, like get three fire engines sitting there now. You ain't even going to be able to get these three fire engines if you can't apply for them.
Commissioner P.
I've been a volunteer firefighter in this county for a number of years. Not, not active now like I have been in the past, but I've too talked to some of the volunteer fire departments. And as a whole, they're in agreement with this. And they realize the same thing that the mayor was saying is with the growth rate that we've got, it's going to be hard for us to maintain the services that our citizens are going to require. I mean, when those tones go off and you've got a fire in your home, you want to know that somebody's going to come and answer that call. And that's basically what we're doing. We're preparing ourselves in this county so we can do that as we grow. This is not doing away with the volunteers. If it was, you'd be hearing me yell, no, it's top of my lungs. I looked at Wilson County quite a few years ago. When I say that, I'd say at least six years ago. It's been longer than that. They were spending over $8 million a year for fire service and they didn't have near the service for their county that we had then, much less now. And like she said, we're spending $420,000 a year on what we're doing. Most of the money that's coming into this is money we've already allocated. These departments, what is it they're getting now? Lisa, is it $30,000 a year? So you're basically talking three departments. There's $90,000 that we're moving from one, from three agencies into a group agency. Now, if we don't get these grants, we fund this at the levels we want to. We're talking about an infancy step. And I think you'll remember a couple of years back, somebody mentioned to me a little while ago, we ought not even be talking to the commissioners that live in the municipalities because this doesn't concern them on the taxes. You know, this all comes from the rural taxes. Well, read, read what it says there, Commissioner. But we started an infancy department a little while back. And that's so we could work on drainage issues because we've got people being flooded. We've got people's houses that are being destroyed. And we, just a baby infancy step, started a public works department. We don't call it that. But we put some equipment and we've got some part-time personnel. And that's basically what we're doing here. We're getting some equipment, we're getting some personnel in place to take care of these serious problems that we've got. I mean, if I get a call at my house, I want to make sure there's somebody going to be able to come help me. And it's just like needing a policeman, you know? Yes, we spend a lot of money on public safety. But I promise you, there's nobody here that would not yell. When they need a policeman, you don't need him. 30 minutes from now, you need him right now. The same thing with a firefighter. And what we're trying to do is do this. We're doing it with an infancy baby step here. Well, we've got control of this funding. Yes, it is starting a new department. But this is a department that's going to help our volunteers that are short on manpower during the daytime. You're basically going to have a driver or something like that in place so they can get out here and get to these wrecks. I mean, if my wife or my children are in a wreck and they're out in my area, it might take 20 minutes for rescue to get there. And I have seen it take longer with pennies that I've worked myself. I've actually had to call in people from Smyrna and Laverne to help extricate people over on the Halls Hill Pike 10 miles on this side of, east side of Murfreesboro. And we can't continue like that. So that's, that's why I would urge you to consider voting for this. And I'm, just like Commissioner Jernigan, no, this is going to bring on a lot more talk to me if they start talking about bringing in fire districts and a tax there. I'm not talking about increasing our taxes for this. I'm talking about working with what we've got, rearranging some of this money so that we can continue to make our volunteer service work. And that's what I'm wanting to do.
Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. Any integral part in my mind of emergency response is communication. Our communication system is inadequate and has been forever. A major part of forming this new department and a major expense that we're going to go through is upgrading our communication system so that every corner of the county will have emergency response, communication, and our departments can talk to each other, which, in my understanding, is not happening right now. This is going to fix that problem. I don't think, I don't think I can put a price tag on safety. We preach safety where I work every hour of every day. And I don't think we can put a price tag on that. If it did cost us money in the future to run this department, where would you rather spend your money? And where would your, the people who live in your neighborhoods rather spend their money, right here in Rutherford County? So if we have to spend money, there's no better place to spend it than right here, if we get to that point. But what sold me on it was the, was the point of improving our communication process that is inadequate right now. And it's going to be able to allow us to respond much quicker and actually probably save property and maybe even save some lives in the future.
Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Hall.
I too have several volunteer fire departments in my district. And they have encouraged me to support this. And just like Commissioner P said, we have allowed over the last few years to have all these buildings. The whole county is zoned R15 and we've allowed people to come out and build their houses. One of the expectations that one would have when you go out anyplace and build is to have some sort of ambulance service and fire service to do there. These volunteer fire departments have worked very hard. As I understand this, this would allow us as a group to apply for grants to get more opportunities to get money that a single individual fire, volunteer fire department would not qualify for. They wouldn't be at the level of serving X number of people because these grants, when they are passed out, they are looked at how many people are served by this organization. And if we have a county organization, then that number goes up to where we are serving many more people than the 11 individual fire stations that are there. So the people that are in my district that are very involved in this are supporting this, so I would encourage you to support it too because like the mayor says, we can only spend the money that we come back and appropriate. But right now, there's enough money in there to get this thing started and see where this goes. Thank you.
Commissioner Hall.
Steve, we can't have the building like we've done in Rutherford County and not support our public safety entities. And you're on planning. And you ought to know what we've put through. As far as the grants go, we got, at last count, we have seven ambulances with 150,000 miles or more on them. That's $75,000 apiece. We should be deadlining them and we're not. We're rolling them, they're rolling down the street. So unless we want to raise taxes and fund them ourself, then this grant is a positive way of trying to take care of that. As he said, communications. I'm in law enforcement as well as fire. And we're on a, one of the best bands out there in Smyrna. But we have dead areas and buildings. But I've got county law enforcement officers, Truman was here earlier, that cannot get out on the radio. They have to take a cellphone and call. It's not fair to those guys. We put them in that position. We built those neighborhoods out there and put them in that spot. It's not right to them. And I may be personal because of what I do for a living, but this is going to be a positive step just on the rescue side alone. As he was saying, on his side of town, you're expecting somebody on Old Nashville Highway to get out to where he's at. And that's if they're at the hall and he's got enough to roll with. We've got trucks going out of service, trucks down. I've not heard any bad complaints. We've had special call meetings on this. I've had one email that was irrational and didn't make any sense whatsoever what the man tried to say. And he ought to know better in the position he's in. One person, not another. And as he said, I'm in a municipality, my district, but, you know, I, as Commissioner Farley's got, I've got a lot of heart into this. This is, we, these guys deserve it. They deserve it. Our volunteers deserve it. This is going to provide them more resources and more ways to help save lives out there. Tennessee's one of the number one in the country for fire deaths. We got fire, a house in the county right now, they're going to ground. That's why we've spoke about sprinkler systems and, you know, hopefully one day we'll get it. Because we rely on volunteers to do a job that we've created for them. And now we're going to question what we're going to be able to buy to them. I ask everybody to vote for it tonight.
Okay, we've had a healthy discussion. Anyone else wish to speak? If not, we do have a motion on the floor, don't we? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that would like to change your vote? You may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen yes, one no, one abstain. Motion passes.
Thank you, Nick. Please continue then, Mrs. Ely.
We will begin with item L2H. I'll give you time to back up and find that resolution. A resolution authorizing assistance to firefighters' grant application. Whereas Rutherford County desires to submit an application for the 2010 Assistance to Firefighters Grant in the amount of $900,000, with $400,000 being for the acquisition of two pumper rescue trucks and $500,000 for the purpose of providing funding for a communication project. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to submit an application for the 2010 Assistance to Firefighters Grant in the amount of $900,000. Resolve this 13th day of May, 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote? Anyone that would like to change your vote? You may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item L2I, a resolution authorizing a Christie-Houston grant application for the acquisition of ambulances. Whereas Rutherford County desires to submit an application to the Christie-Houston Foundation in the amount of $300,000 to provide funding to purchase four new 2007 model transport ambulances. And whereas the ambulances are And whereas the ambulances are under warranty and have never been titled, therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to submit an application to the Christie-Houston Foundation in the amount of $300,000 for the purchase of four new 2007 ambulances. Resolve this 13th day of May 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Commissioner McAdoo, second, any discussion? Please record your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
21 yes, motion passes.
Item L-2J, a resolution authorizing Christie-Houston grant application to provide funding for the construction of a fire station, whereas Rutherford County desires to submit an application to the Christie-Houston Foundation in the amount of $400,000 for the purpose of providing funding for the construction of a new fire station of approximately 122 square feet, which will also be used as the headquarters for the proposed county fire and rescue department. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to submit an application to the Christie-Houston Foundation in the amount of $400,000 for the purpose of providing funding for the construction of a new fire station and the headquarters for the proposed county fire and rescue department. Resolve this 13th day of May 2010, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Bullitt. And make note that there is a typo here, the 122 square feet is in era. Commissioner Bullitt?
That's what I wanted to point out, this looks like we're spending a lot of money for a little bitty outhouse.
Well, and I will, I'm going to apologize, I can't quote the accurate number, but it'll be more like 12,200, I'm not sure, Dr. Bullitt.
Unless you're planning to go to the toy store and get toy fire engines to put in there.
We will make note of that and let the minutes reflect that that will be properly corrected. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
21 yes, motion passes.
Item L-2K, a resolution to adopt the Strategic Economic Development Plan, whereas the Three-Star Program was developed to meet the needs and challenges of the evolving economic environment in urban and rural communities and to partner with communities to create opportunities for sustained economic growth. And whereas communities seeking certification as a three-star community must meet certain criteria, including the adoption of a five-year strategic economic development plan. And whereas in achieving the mission of the Three-Star Program, the Department of Economic and Community Development commits to assist communities in developing and implementing a strategic economic plan. Now therefore be it resolved by the county legislative body of Rutherford County, Tennessee, meeting in regular session in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, that one, the legislative body of Rutherford County declares that the county has adopted a five-year strategic economic development plan to be updated annually. Section two, the Strategic Economic Development Plan includes the county's economic goals in promoting economic growth, a plan to accomplish those goals, and a projected timeline in achieving those goals. Section three, the Strategic Economic Development Plan addresses the county's goals pertaining to existing industry, manufacturing recruitment, workforce development, retail slash service, tourism, agriculture, infrastructure assessment, and educational assessment, adopted this 13th day of May 2010. I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Coggan, any questions? All in favor of this, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Item K, excuse me, L-2L, a resolution to affirm compliance with Title VI regulations, whereas both Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and Civil Rights Restoration Act of 1987 provide that no person in the United States shall, on the ground of race, color, or national origin, be excluded from participation in or be denied the benefits of or be subjected to discrimination under any program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. And whereas the Tennessee Attorney General opined in opinion number 9247 that state and local governments are required to comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act in administering federally funded programs. And whereas the Community Development Division of the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development administers the Three-Star Program and awards financial incentives for communities designated as three-star communities. And whereas by virtue of the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development receiving federal financial assistance, all communities designated as three-star communities must confirm that the county, that the community is in compliance with the regulations of Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the Civil Rights Restoration Act of 1987. Therefore be it resolved by the county legislative body of Rutherford County, Tennessee, meeting in regular session at Murfreesboro, Tennessee, that section one, the legislative body of Rutherford County declares that the county is in compliance with the Title VI regulations. Section two, the Department of Economic and Community Development may from time to time monitor the county's compliance with the federal Title VI regulations. And section three, this resolution shall take effect upon adoption of public welfare requiring it. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Commissioner Daniels, second, any questions or discussion? All in favor of this, please say aye. Any opposed?
Item L-2N, a resolution ratifying an amendment to TCA regarding county registers. Whereas Tennessee Code Annotated Section 8-21-1001 relative to county registers has been amended to allow certain registers, including the Rutherford County Register, to use funds for other purposes directly related to the official function of said office after purchase of computer equipment and software, makes upgrades to computer equipment and software, purchase supplies, maintenance and services relating to computer equipment and software, from revenue collected from data processing fees. And whereas prior to any purchase relating to the official function of the register, from revenue collected above an amount necessary for purchasing, upgrading, supplying, and maintaining computer equipment and software by the register's office as provided in subdivision I, the register shall obtain the approval of the county legislative body for such purchase. And whereas for said amendment to be effective, the same must be approved by a two-thirds vote of the county legislative body. Now therefore be it resolved by two-thirds vote of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session, that the provisions of Tennessee Code Annotated 8-21-1001I be and the same is hereby ratified, confirmed, and approved, the public welfare requiring it. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner P, any questions or discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
21 yes, motion passes.
Item L-2O, a resolution to approve a four-year reappraisal plan, whereas Tennessee Code Annotated Section 67-5-1601 establishes a general six-year reappraisal for updating and equalizing property values for every county in Tennessee for property tax purposes. Whereas a six-year reappraisal program consists of an on-site review of each parcel of real property over a five-year period, followed by revaluation of all such property in the year following completion of the review period, and includes a current value updating during the third year of the review cycle and sales ratio studies during the second and fifth years of the review cycle. Whereas Tennessee Code Annotated Section 67-5-1601 provides that upon the submission of a plan by the assessor and upon approval of the State Board of Equalization, a reappraisal program may be completed by a continuous four-year cycle comprised of an on-site review of each real property over a three-year period, followed by revaluation of all such property in the year following completion of the review period. And whereas the county legislative body of Rutherford County understands that by approving such a four-year reappraisal cycle, a sales ratio study will be conducted during the second year of the review cycle, and the centrally assessed properties and commercial, industrial, tangible, personal property will be equalized by the sales ratio adopted by the State Board of Equalization. Now therefore be it resolved by the county legislative body of Rutherford County, meeting in regular session on this 13th day of May 2010, that pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated Section 67-5-1601, reappraisal shall be accomplished in Rutherford County by a continuous four-year cycle beginning tax year 2010, comprised of an on-site review of each parcel of real property over a three-year period, followed by revaluation of all such property for tax year 2014, adopted this 13th day of May 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Schaefer, any questions on this? Commissioner Sparks?
I just wanted to ask real quick, I've had several calls on some of this reappraisal, especially on commercial property and as well as residential. I mean, I've had some people tell me there's one tract of land this guy had, seven acres, it increased 250 percent. Another commercial building, been in Smyrna for 40 years, and it increased 43 percent. But Mayor, what are the, if these people are watching from home, what are their options as far as contacting the assessor's office or Board of Equalization? Can you explain kind of the process when people have these questions?
Well, I mean, you named off the two primary options. First, I think you'll find the assessor's office perfectly willing to discuss any person's piece of property with him carefully and thoroughly, so we should encourage that. And secondly, if they're not happy with that, they do have an opportunity to appear before the County Board of Equalization. So this right here, we're discussing is just a routine process, we have to do this every four years and send it to the state telling them that we've made a plan and we are going to again start the four-year appraisal review process that has to take place. Okay, any other questions? All of you in favor of this, please say aye. Are there any opposed? That motion is carried, now we're ready to move along. I think we should commend Ms. Ely repeatedly for her good job of taking us through some complex situations, and I really appreciate what she's doing. So now, Commissioner Jordan, Health and Education Committee.
I appreciate it, Mayor. I asked Mr. Gill, since we were going through a time here that probably the most changes in education in Rutherford County, certainly since 1972, and we have, of course, considerable amount of personnel changes, changes at the Magnet School and renovation of McThadden and Race to the Top and funds that the state was lucky enough to get, and huge changes. If he would spend a few minutes updating the county commission on some of these very items and anything else that he may feel is necessary, and Director Gill is with us tonight, and Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose that Mr. Gill speak to us.
Thank, without objection, I think that's very appropriate, and so please come forward, Director Gill, and tell us what you'd like to about the good things that are happening in our school system.
I wasn't sure I was going to make that midnight curfew for a little while. Mr. Doug, Mr. said 11:30, excuse me. Anyway, that said, I hadn't intended to say anything about Race to the Top, but I will just give you a real quick summary of what Race to the Top's all about. Tennessee was one of two states that was recognized by the federal government to receive money to basically advance education in the state of Tennessee. We got a, Tennessee was awarded $500 million, the state took $250 million of those $500 million, and I presume that will be used to take over failing school systems. The remaining $250 million will be divided among the other 130 or so districts, based on your poverty and your free reduced population. And while we're the sixth largest system in the state of Tennessee, we only got roughly $9 million, as I recall, right Jeff? Yeah, that's right, somewhere around $4 million, pardon me. Whereas Memphis, for example, got 121 million of the 250, Nashville got 58 million. So while we're happy to have $4 million, it won't go very far with respect to items that is going to be useful, which are professional development, and there are some real restrictions on how we use it. But at any rate, we have submitted our application, which was due Friday, and we'll find out whether it's approved or not, and we'll try to put that money to good use in the very near future. What I would like to talk about, and Commissioner Jordan and I have discussed some of the ongoing projects, obviously with the board of education, there's always something going on construction wise. If it's not a roof or a chiller or something else, it's a new building or an addition or a renovation. And right now, the three major projects we have taking place are obviously the construction of the two new middle schools and Central Magnet School. Let me first kind of give you a quick update on, one, the construction of the two new middle schools, and also the hiring protocol, and also some other information pertaining to that. They're both moving along relatively well. We've told them it's not an option whether they're ready or not, they've got to be ready. We've got roughly 1,700, 1,750 students that are being zoned into Whitworth Buchanan and Oakland Middle School. Oakland probably will open up with about 950 students, and Buchanan will be pretty close to 800. So they've got to be ready. Now, they've had a rough year with respect to the weather, you know what the winter was like, we've had rain this spring, Mr. Clardy's there daily to work with the two project managers, both of whom have worked with us before and have always made their deadlines, so we have every intention to open on time. Now, I would say this with respect to just a couple notes on Whitworth. The interior site road is in progress, the base stone and the asphalt is complete, sidewalk's been poured, phone service, permanent electric power and water installs, stormwater underground piping is 95% complete, the detention ponds are complete, sanitary sewer remains 95% complete, geothermal is 95% complete, and the off-site sewer is 85% complete. Of course, we certainly run the, I don't know if this, that's the right word, but we run the risk of some pretty significant development out there when that school opens and that sewer gets out there off John Bragg. Yes, sir?
Mr. Gill, are you triggered? My memory, you said, talked about Oakland Middle School. With this flooding that here recently, I know part of that area there was low at one time, how did, what type of flooding did it have, or did it have any, or what was the?
You know, if you've been by Oakland Middle, and I've had several comments, so why didn't you raise that, why didn't you make it higher? And of course, it would have been substantial to raise that, the elevation on it. None whatsoever. The detention pond's in place, it took the water fine, it was not an issue, period. Matter of fact, it drained off better than the other school did. So we were pleased with that. Now, Whitworth Buchanan, we hired new positions for Whitworth Buchanan, we hired seven new teachers, obviously a principal, assistant principal, some office staff. Most of the teachers there traveled with the students. Obviously, all the kids at Buchanan went there, many of the kids from Central went there, some of the kids from Christiana went there, so there wasn't a substantial number of employees hired, if you count the administration, office staff, probably 10 or 11 people. Now, Oakland is a little further ahead than Whitworth Buchanan. It's about 95% complete, we anticipate it being opening on time. I don't want to bore you with details, but they, as I said, will probably have 950 students, which is just... which is just under capacity. We added 7.5 new positions plus administrative, so we're talking about another 11 or 12 positions. All the other teachers there transferred with students, moved with students. Now the protocol on that is, when we open a new school, we obviously, all the teachers from Last Castis, their students were zoned there, they went. Half the teachers from Central went, and when we needed other people to transfer, we allowed them to apply for voluntary transfers, and also gave priority to seasoned teachers with respect to going there, all the while making sure that we had a fair sampling of veteran teachers and young teachers, and some that have only been there a few years, because we don't want to load one school up with what's construed with all veteran teachers and the other all young teachers. So we do take all that into consideration. We're really excited about these schools, one of our goals, and I think your goal as school board, and certainly Mr. Watson, when he was superintendent, was to get to a K-5, 6, 8, 9, 12 school system, and this kind of brings that to fruition. The only exception are Thurmond Francis, they're K-8, and Egleville, K-12. So we commend you guys for, you know, your commitment, and exciting days ahead. I can't wait until they're both open in the fall. Any questions with respect to the two middle schools? Okay, now Central Magnet, and I want to go on record, I think when we reflect back in 10 years, this is going to be one of the best things to ever happen to the county. I think it'll be viewed as one of the top schools, not only in Tennessee, but probably across the South. Certainly a little different than when you and I went to Old Smyrna High, Alan. Let me just give you a listing of some of the course offerings. Not sure I could have passed many of these. Obviously, English, let's say I'm at Central Magnet and I'm taking English, it's going to be in honors or advanced placement English, that's the lowest level offered. If I want to take a foreign language, I got my choice of Mandarin, Chinese, Latin, French. If I want to take math, I can take AP Calculus, AP Statistics, I can take AP Chemistry, AP Physics, I can take honors Anthropology, I could take honors Government, honors Personal Finance. We talked about an engineering academy. The engineering offerings are going to be Principles of Engineering, Introduction to Engineering Design, Digital Electronics, Civil Engineering and Architecture, Aerospace Engineering, Engineering Design and Development, Biomedical Academy, Principles of Biomedical Sciences, Human Body Systems, Medical Interventions, BMS, Capstone course, all the fine arts that you can imagine will be offered. And when it comes to business courses, and they do have to have some business courses, we're not talking about business ed, we're talking web design, virtual enterprise, interactive, This is what we're looking at. This is going to be, you know, education's changed, period, but, and very few of you, well, very few of you are my age, but I know when you sat in a, when you enrolled for your classes many years ago, you didn't have those kinds of choices. It makes us so proud that we're going to have that caliber of student and that caliber of curriculum. Thought it's also interesting to note, the enrollment, the sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth grades are full. If you recall, we said we start out 6 through 10, and each of the following two years, we would add a grade until we became a 6 through 12 Magnet School. 6th, 7th, 8th, 9th are all full, 10th, as we suspected, isn't totally full. And it's because most of those guys are in their high schools, they've made friends, they partook in sports, or extracurricular, or something else, and they don't come as quickly. But it's pretty interesting to note, we've obviously pulled kids into high school from Blackman High, Egleville, Laverne High, Oakland High. Well, let me just give you the numbers. Blackman High, 23, Egleville High, 4, Laverne High, 36, Oakland, 31, Riverdale, 63, Siegel, 50, Smyrna High, 30, Cedar Hall, 3, Middle Tennessee Christian, 12, Providence, 11, Gateway, 4, St. Rose, 2, Webb, 2. I mean, we're attracting kids from all across Rutherford County, kids that are going to private schools, there's a real passion for getting in this school. And to get in is an accomplishment in itself. In order to be admitted, you have to have a 3.0 GPA in the five core subjects, which math, language arts, reading, social studies, and science, for the previous two years at the time of application. The student must also be at or above the 80th percentile in two areas of TCAP for the previous two years at time of application. So it's tough to get in. And the perk of it being tough to get in, you're going to be able to challenge kids. You're not going to have to curtail your curriculum and slow down, you're going to be accelerating all the time. And I think there will be some real scholars produced at this school. And as I said, I think you'll be able to reflect back in years and read about this school and probably, hopefully, national publications. With respect to, we had to hire 32 new teachers there, which brings the grand total of 46 new teachers hired as a result of opening these three schools. Now, I know one of Commissioner Will Jordan's favorite questions is, don't forget, guys, we build new schools, we got to pay to open them. Now, I'm proud to say that we're going to be able to absorb those costs through fund balance and also some growth money from the state, without any kind of tax increase from the county commission, so, and I also appreciate the mayor acknowledging, he appreciates us doing that, so if y'all want to give us a hand, that'll be okay. Yeah. How many students? Yeah, hang on, two seconds. Let's see, as I said, the sixth, seventh, eighth will be at capacity, there'll be 125, 150, 150 at the sixth, seventh, eighth. Capacity at the ninth grade is 200, there's 201 enrolled, and 70 in the 10th. Now bear in mind that each year those numbers roll forward, and it'll be a matter of three years before there'll be, I think, somewhere in the vicinity of 1,000, 1,100 students there, full capacity. We're moving right along with renovation. If you recall, we had to convert eight science labs, I think two or three of those, or maybe even more, have been done. Halls, pardon me, stairwell's been painted, restroom's been painted, there's some demolition already been done. Over the summer, we're doing cafeteria work to expand it a little bit, and a few other projects to the tune of about $2.4 million, I believe. But exciting days. Again, I hate to, you know, overdo it, but I'm really excited about that Magnet School opening. And we'll have some kind of kickoff here in the fall, hopefully all you guys will come. And I'll take any questions with respect to any of that or anything else.
That's an excellent report, Mr. Gill, we really appreciate that. Commissioner Daniels, please use your microphone.
There used to be a lot of broken seats in the auditorium there. Is it pretty full now where you can sit anywhere?
I think, yeah, we replaced all those seats.
Good. And the other thing, I keep getting questions, well, are they going to have any sports programs at all?
Absolutely. They will have every sport except for wrestling and football. And we dedicated, so for example, if you go to the school and you want to participate in wrestling or football, you have to go to a site that's dedicated by the Board of Education pursuant to Tennessee Secondary School Athletic Association regulations. The Board designated Egleville as a site for football, and I guess wrestling, I can't remember, Jeff, do you? But at any rate, there's several were interested, so it was a tough call, they didn't, another board wanted to choose one of the local high schools, so they chose Egleville, knowing that they could probably stand a few scholar athletes out there, so.
Good.
That was it. Not that there aren't plenty of scholars at Egleville. I mean, let me clarify. Now, I would say also, Commissioner Daniels, in regards to athletics, we've worked a deal out, like for example, the baseball team will play at Patterson Park, I believe that's what it's called, right down the road, there's already a soccer field, gymnasium, obviously they have, so it's not going to be any cost to anybody to develop any kind of facilities. So it worked out well.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Just a clarification on that point about the Egleville School, as I understand it, the Board wanted to do something differently, but the T double S double A said that you didn't have to pick one school for them to go to, that you didn't have a variety of choices on there, and they had to help select. Just for people that are watching, it wasn't a lottery, wasn't a recruitment thing or anything.
No, 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 no.
T double S double A had to help y'all assign which school that they, they had to approve it, in other words.
The bylaws of the T double S double A are that if you go to a school that they don't offer a sport, and children want to, in that school want to participate in that sport, and want to go somewhere else, you can designate one school. I actually went to the T double S double A and tried to lobby them to change that rule, to say, let the kid participate in athletics at their zone school. For example, if you came from Smyrna High School and you went to Central Magnet, you should be able to play at Smyrna High. If you went to Egleville and you go to Magnet, you should be, but they gave that about five minutes' thought and voted it down. How I like coming to you guys sometimes, you know?
Okay, anything else? All right, thank you very much, sir, we really appreciate that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, did you have anything else, Commissioner Jordan, is that all we had on health and ed? There's no report from property management, or public safety, or the Steering and Legislative Committee, therefore Commissioner Jernigan, we're ready for Public Works and Planning.
Public Works and Planning Committee has got two resolutions, night first, and it'll be a widening of Lebanon Road, State Route 231, the second will be a resolution to approve one drainage easement, Flemings Farm, one drainage easement, mid land acres, and one at Carroll Road. Whereas Lebanon Road, State Route 231, in Rutherford County, is a highly-traveled, state-maintained road. Whereas Lebanon Road, State Route 231, is a main corridor for hauling solid waste to the BFI landfill in large dump trucks and commuting to and from Lebanon, Tennessee. And whereas Lebanon Road, State Route 231, has experienced substantial residential and commercial growth, causing a public safety hazard due to the narrowness of Lebanon Road, State Route 231, and turn lanes not being available. Whereas it is in the best interest and safety of the citizens of Rutherford County for Lebanon Road, State Route 231, to be widened and improved for vehicle traffic. And therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to request the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation widen and improve Lebanon Road, State Route 231, in Rutherford County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved, the Tennessee Department of Transportation consider widening and improving Lebanon Road, State Route 231, in stages, if it is not possible to do the entire project at this time. Be it further resolved by the Board of Commissioners, that the county clerks send a copy of this resolution to the state senator and state representative for Rutherford County, Tennessee. Resolve this thirteenth day of May, 2010, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Jordan, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, thank you.
Whereas pursuant to the Private Act authorizing the Rutherford County Commission and Superintendent to work on public drainage easements, provided for the maintenance of public drainage easements requires the county legislative body establish an official list of recognized public drainage easements. The attached Exhibit One are the easements recommended by the Planning Department. And whereas the Public Works and Planning Committee has approved the list of public drainage easements as submitted by the Planning Department, now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the county commission approves the attached list of public drainage easements, Exhibit One, as submitted by the Planning Department in accordance with Tennessee Code Annotated 54-903 and 54-904. The public drainage easement shall be the only public drainage easement which shall be worked upon by the Rutherford County Highway Department. Resolve this thirteenth day of May, 2010, I so move.
Commissioner Farley, second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, thank you, Commissioner Jernigan. Is there any other business to come before this body? Commissioner Bullen.
Mr. Mayor, this side of the room has determined that the error on the fire station of 122 square feet, the, was a typo, that it was actually the size of the bed of Commissioner Number Seven.
Okay, now, Commissioner Jordan.
Yes, sir. I just want to remind you, Commissioner, that the 23rd to the 30th is Spring Fling in the Borough, state championships in five sports. And it's also, by the way, the Sun Belt Baseball Tournament at MTSU, but I encourage you to keep up with the athletes, because we have numerous people in the county that are defending state champions, or came in second or third last year, and we will have some people from somewhere that we will want to honor, and you really have to hustle on that, because schools will be out right at the end of it, and you'll only have a day or two to find that coach at the school. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other business to come? Commissioner Sparks?
Real quick, Smyrna West Alternative School is raising goods for these flood victims. K Davenport, Smyrna West is located over on Old Nashville Highway, I think they're needing dry goods, canned soups, and bleach, and so forth, but also Sina Mosley with Box 100, Laverne Alderman is in need of volunteers. Her number, if anyone wants to volunteer, is 405-1571. Thank you.
All right, is there anything else anyone wants to say? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.